We'll wait just a couple more minutes so everyone appears.
What else?
Hi, Keaton.
Hey, everybody. Hey, Wally.
Evening, all.
Hello, everyone, actually. Hey, Wes.
Yeah.
How's business been given the COVID?
We've been busier than we've been in 10 years.
Really?
I've been really busy.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, so. Yeah, a lot of homes for sale and a lot of real estate closing, so.
So I understand.
She is looking forward to be in your class, period.
Good. Closings aren't going very quickly, but they're starting to do a little better.
I can attest to that personally.
Yeah.
My father's place is for sale.
Oh, okay.
We work ever for the search to get back to us, so.
Okay. Is Ryan here somewhere?
I have not seen him come in yet.
Wes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Kevin, yes.
Any chance next time we meet, we could possibly do something at the fire hall with social distancing?
Possibly. We'll have to follow the village guidelines, so we'll see what they think of that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, this Zoom thing.
I mean.
Wes, can you hear me? Chuck Razzoni.
Yes, I can, Chuck, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Appreciate it. I'm good.
So, you know, the board certainly can legally meet in person, even though it can legally meet remotely. But as Wes said, we would certainly have to follow the village guidelines and we'd have to think about, you know, how we would manage attendance by the public. I have no concerns about the ability of the board members to distance themselves and mask themselves. But if we do a meeting in person, it's going to have to be open to the public.
Well, actually, as long as this executive order is in place, actually, we could just have it, people be able to watch on Zoom.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, so we could, we could do that. If the board, if the board wanted to do that and thought that would be a more productive way to do it, we could definitely do that.
Actually, just for everyone's knowledge, the village board is planning on its reorganization meeting being held at the end of the month, the last Monday of this month, and the mayor and the board would like that to be in person for the board and available by Zoom for the public. I have some, a new camera that I purchased, that's a wide-angle lens that we can use specifically for use in the auditorium. You know, we don't want to say no public, because it is obviously open, but we prefer people to, you know, be present, so to speak, through Zoom. I'm telling you all this so that, you know, you are aware that it's kind of a trial night that we're doing it with all, with Zoom actually in the auditorium. So we should be ready for it if you guys want to do it at your next meeting. So I'm.
And, you know, and also just to remind everybody, you know, the governor essentially keeps extending these executive orders, including the authorization for boards to meet remotely or meet in person and only allow the public to participate remotely, basically in 30-day increments. And he did it again at the last possible minute, you know, on Friday. So we really don't know what the situation is going to be in October. So as I've said, the last couple months, you know, we always kind of have to, I would plan on the fact that the executive order will likely be extended again, but, but we at least need to have a contingency plan in case it's not, in which case, it's just like a regular meeting. We would meet in person, the public would be allowed to attend, but we would have to institute some rules to make sure it's safe.
My brother-in-law is on the planning board up on Lake Basset, and their board meets, and just one applicant at a time will come into the board, and then everyone else watches by Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, could do that.
So they've been doing that for three months now, meeting that way. About, before we get into the public part of the meeting here, anyone have any real concerns on this project now? The, everyone looked at the changes, revisions?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I interrupted somebody.
Go ahead, Wally.
I have the same concerns I basically voiced over the seeker situation. All the, the way I look at it, first and foremost, though, Chip, yeah, you mentioned in your recent email to us about timeframes. Most timeframes in the court system and as well as time limitations have been extended by executive order. Isn't that the same with respect to any quotes, time limits this planning board is under?
I, to the best of my knowledge, there's been no executive order which has sought to modify or extend the deadlines, and I'll put that in air quotes, for boards to act. As I indicated in my email, and, you know, we don't want to get into attorney-client issues, but this is a straightforward issue. You know, what the village law provides is a board has 62 days after the close of a public hearing, if there's a public hearing, for 62 days after a complete application to render a decision. That being said, there is no default approval in this context. The only default approval is in the subdivision context. So it is not really, I'm not aware of any situation where, where a board would, where the failure to meet that deadline actually has any definitive consequences. But that being said, that's what we should, you know, it's our obligation as a board to try to adhere to that for the best, as best we can. And that's all I was, you know, pointing out. I don't think if we, if we went beyond 62 days without rendering a decision, which we have since the public hearing, I'm not concerned that that creates a legal problem necessarily.
Then for me, the, to be candid, yeah, all the labeled, as you did, Chip, the subjective criteria, and I, yeah, are things that bother me about this project. I don't think it fits the area essentially. The project itself, yeah, I like what was done. I like all the changes made at the, you know, request of this board, and I like what Sean Hopkins and his clients have done. I just don't like it there, that it were somewhere else, and I think, yeah, the subjective elements, that it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood irrespective of some of the, yeah, some of the objective criteria that you not only delineated, but may have been set out by the name of Elizabeth Holmes. Yet irrespective of those objective criteria, my, that building there doesn't fit the character of that portion of, yeah, the village, and I'm offended, I really am, by that letter sent to the board from that woman in West Amherst. Yeah, suggesting that we might, yeah, any member of this board, yes, might, yeah, refuse, yeah, to vote for this project, because, yeah, it's discriminatory in some fashion in essence. That really did upset me. I'm not looking for a response from you, Chip.
And I understand, and I, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you one, Wally, you know, that, that's fine. I laid out the advice that I gave the board, and, you know, you're free to agree with it or disagree with it.
No, no.
So that's fine. I don't know, I don't want to jump off track if other people want to comment on this. I just wanted to mention one thing, just for the boards on a totally different issue, just if right now we're not talking about this, that we will have, you know, the, the village board is proposing to do some rezoning over in the South Long Park area, essentially rezoning property that's owned by the village, and it's mostly parkland and the street and the DPW yard. So that has to come to this board for its recommendation. I recommended that we not try to do that tonight, just because we've got this on the agenda, so I think that will be on your agenda for your next meeting, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Because the bill, just the village board is anxious to get the public hearing scheduled on that, so. But they can't act on that until you guys review that, make your recommendation.
Tim, will you be sending us information on that?
Yeah, there, there, sorry, Amy, yes, there's, there's a draft of the local law, the revised map, the EAF, everything that the village board, the village board is the seeker lead agency with respect to that issue, but we'll send all that stuff to you. It's a fairly simple process, but again, you have your role to play in that, and we've been so busy with it, with this project. We haven't had a chance to get that to you yet, but, but I know the village board is anxious to try to get that moving again, because they've been talking about it for about a year.
Okay, thanks, Chip.
Yep.
Tim, you said that the applicant had applied to the town of Amherst for a curb cut permit on Village Point, and as far as you know, that has been denied?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, me, myself and Sean Hopkins met with Pat Lucia, where they did do a formal application. I thought I sent it out earlier to all of you. There was another letter sent from town of Amherst, which I'll try to locate if you guys want to have it. He basically reaffirmed his denial is what he did, so they did do their due diligence. They, he is going to deny it. We met with him in person. That was all accomplished this past week.
Chairman Stone, I just wanted to, you know, that I did, I received a copy of that too, but frankly, I just haven't had a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
To see exactly what he said, but as I've advised the board before, I believe certainly within the power of this board to do what you did, which was to condition, or, and I really request that they make that application with the understanding that it would be a condition to at least make that application, but obviously, we can't control what the town of Amherst highway superintendent does or doesn't. But my understanding from Tim and Sean Hopkins is that they did apply again to, to the town, and that the town, again, rejected that request or that application.
Okay.
They reject the request in writing? I don't know.
Yes, they did. I can email it, or I just downloaded it right now. I'll send it around.
I'm sorry, Tim, what was that?
I said, I just downloaded it again. I'll send it around right now, but yes, they gave us another letter in writing. It is posted to the website.
The last one?
Anyone have any questions, or?
Oh, I just, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I mean, what it says essentially is this letter reiterates my formal decision denying the curb cut permit, request for a driveway connection to Village Point Lane. In addition to the detailed explanation, my letter of February 13th, 2020, my decision denying the curb cut is also supported by my review of the project documents that were referenced in the letter from Mr. Hopkins dated September 2nd, 2020, and then he recites a number of the documents, but. You know, he's saying the additional capacity analysis shows that the increase in traffic utilizing the two driveways on Evan Street will have a negligible effect on operations and will not change movement delay or levels of service. So I guess his position is because there's not going to be a significant impact on Evan Street, he doesn't see a reason why he should allow the curb cut or any impact on Village Point Lane, I guess. I don't want to.
Yeah, that was the reasoning, because that's what he told us in person. He said that, you know, based on the village's traffic study group, Fisher, their recommendation was what you just said. And he said, based on that input from the village's third-party review, that he didn't feel it was necessary, so that you are correct in what you're.
Okay. Would I be able to add something to the minutes of this meeting?
This is just our work session, which you're, you know, in regard to what?
In regards to the curb cutting specifically, now that we're on the topic. I, I live at 98 Evan Street, and reading some of the minutes of your meetings, I'm told that the, the word is that you will be putting in an exit across, or the plan's called for an exit directly across from my home. I have very serious concerns about that, specifically the headlights. Last night was, you know, a good example of it. We had some teenagers that parked on the lawn, and we had headlights shining through our front windows. So I can't imagine what it's going to be like when there's, I don't know, however many residents residing there, and at all hours of the night have traffic coming in and out across from my house with headlights shining on my house. If there was another exit on Village Point Lane, and there was no exit on my.
Have you talked to Mr. Hopkins about this? Yeah, have you talked to the applicant's attorney about this?
I, I have not spoken with anyone until now about this.
So, so all I, I, I think I could, I think I'm accurately stating the position of the board, that the, a majority of the board, if not entire board, would prefer to see a curb cut on Village Point Lane, but it's not our street, so we can't require it. Only the town can, only the town can require it, and, and, but, so if there's not going to be a curb cut over there, the site does need two points of ingress and egress to, per fire code. So that's the dilemma.
Understandable, but I just want to make my position known that it's going to seriously affect my home, and, you know, I don't know what can be done as a result of it, but I think the plans need to be redesigned and relooked at, because nobody's come to me with any of these concerns, which seem obvious. You know, I don't think anybody would want headlights shining in their front of their house from 60 or 70 residents exiting a property.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
What did you say your address was?
98 Evan Street.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Is Sean there? Is Sean listening?
I'll check in at one point, Wes.
He was here.
I, I know he, he told me that he had a meeting at the town at 7:00, but I did see his, I did see him logged in at one point. Oh, no, yeah, his, his.
His iPad's logged in.
His iPad is logged in.
Okay. At our last meeting, he was going to talk to the resident at 98 Evans.
Yes, and the interesting thing is on the headlights study, it does have the car going from Bloker Homes, the headlights going right to 98 Evans.
Right.
Yes, that's my concern, and no one has contacted me. I did reach out to somebody in the village, but I didn't ever receive a call back, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure which gentleman I did call at the time. I, when I read the, the meeting notes from the last meeting, I placed a quick phone call, but didn't receive a call back, so I figured I'd attend this meeting to at least put my notes in, in the, in the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, when we get to the public part of the meeting, we'll talk about it a little more.
Thank you.
I think, I think Sean can answer that. I mean, we did get the updated headlights study, and I know that they were trying to shift the driveway as much as possible to avoid being directly across from any houses.
I don't think that it's possible unless you were to put them on somebody else's house. So, you know, there's, from what I can see, if you're going to put anything in, within, within three or four houses, it's going to affect one of my neighbors.
Anyone have anything else? I don't have anything for the next five minutes. Do you want to? Do we want to take a quick break for five minutes?
Your thing? Get up and stretch?
Here and I have it. We'll synchronize watches, and we'll see you at 7:30. We have everyone back here. We're close. Yes, welcome to the Village of Williamsville Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Deb's there, could you please take attendance?
Mr. Razzoni?
Here.
Mr. Trigilio?
Care.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Lester?
Here.
Yourself, okay? Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Pacer?
Here.
Ms. Alexander?
Here.
Ms. Waterman Culpa? Mr. Greco?
Here.
Mr. Master? Mr. Master? Ms. Grenhour? Is there a trustee in attendance?
Which is another problem in itself. There should be a trustee here.
Thank you.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the August 3rd, 2020 meeting minutes. Anyone have a chance to read those, and anyone care to make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions, additions? Any comments or questions, additions? Is Matt all in favor?
Hi.
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 I abstain.
I'm sorry, you look stained.
Rob Trugelio?
Thank you.
Okay, so that was under new business, now under old business is log twenty nineteen PB dash six A and six B. It's bloker home one thirty-five Evans Street, and it's a site plan and architectural review for that. If, I'm not sure if Sean's here or Matt's here, if they'd like to do, have a presentation they could do.
Wes, I would like to ask a question.
Yes.
Wasn't it decided that if we were gonna do any voting, we were gonna have a full board?
Well, things came up at the last minute. Kate may still join us. She had, she's at a school board meeting tonight.
Okay.
And she hoped to be back in time to vote.
Okay.
And Ellie was not available, so we, as of yesterday, we had a full board.
My, but my point is, not being here for the discussion of the meeting, she would still be able to vote?
I.
Oh, yeah, Kate, sure, absolutely.
She has all the same information we have, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me? This is Matt Long from Long Associates Architects.
Uh, yes, we can.
Okay, so Sean's having problems with his connection, so I called his cellphone, and he's conferencing to me, which is then conferencing to Zoom. So we're doing something totally incredible tonight, never before done in the history of the world. So Sean, can you hear everybody now?
Yeah.
And can you hear Sean?
Yes, hi, Sean.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, let's do it this way, Matt, I don't know what the issue is. Okay?
Okay, it's all yours, Sean.
Uh, yes, good evening, members of the planning board. Sean Hopkins here this evening on behalf of the applicant, People Inc. Also with me, and I'm connected through his phone, is Matt Long. As the board recall, you viewed this project during the course of many meetings. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk briefly through the PowerPoint presentation and emphasize where there's additional information. As we go, please feel free to ask questions. I was on part of the work session where the owner of the property across the street spoke, so we can speak about that topic as well, whenever the planning board deems appropriate. So with that being said, Keaton, if you want to go to the next slide. So the applicants are People Inc. and the bloker homes. The project site itself is located at one thirty-five Evans, five point two-six acres in size, is of course property zone, neighborhood mixed use district. We have made one change to the density of the project, which we'll discuss in greater detail. We were previously during your last month's meeting at ninety-five units, we're now at ninety-three units. Seventy-five of those will be one bedroom, eighteen of them will be two bedroom. Those include units that will be affordable to those making between fifty percent and ninety percent of the median income, the Buffalo Niagara Metropolitan Statistical Area, and also does include twenty units designated for individuals that are homeless and who are identified as having unmet housing needs, quote-unquote supportive units. Estimated project cost is about thirty-one point five million dollars. As the board knows, the zoning board appeals granted an area variance for the number of parking spaces during its meeting on June eighteenth, subject to a condition. And then you held a public hearing on December second of two thousand nineteen, and then, of course, this is the eleventh meeting at which it's been addressed. Finally, the planning board did issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quarter Review Act during its meeting on eighteenth of this year. Next, Keaton. Everyone's obviously familiar with the current status of the site. It's the bloker home, consists of an assisted living and enhanced living residence with fifty-seven private, private rooms and suites. And simply a color photograph, next. So this is the original plan that we presented going all the way back to last summer. As many of you recall, it was consisted of a large addition to the existing bloker home building that would have occupied several hundred feet of the Evans Street frontage. It did require three area variances from the zoning board appeals. Based on some initial feedback we received from this board, as well as nearby residents, in particular those on Village Point Lane to the back, we quickly went to the drawing board and changed this original project layout. Next. So we did make a comprehensive updated submission on July twenty-ninth, which we spoke about during the planning board meeting on August third. This is just to reiterate what those changes were. And then if we go to the next slide, we've updated the site plan once again, and we'll highlight those changes. So the plans that we submitted last week on September first included an updated site plan, updated landscape plan and planting schedule, updated elevation plans for the north building prepared by Matt Long and his team, updated headlights study section plan, as well as a headlights study and adjacent building heights plan. We'll talk about most of these plans in detail. Next slide, Keaton. So one topic that came up specifically during the August third meeting was the fact that Village Point Lane is a town of Amherst roadway, and you specifically asked us to revisit the issue of whether or not a curb cut in driveway connection to Village Point Lane would be permitted. As you recall, on February thirteenth of this year, Patrick Lucy, who's the highway superintendent for Town of Amherst, issued a letter to the building department and this board indicating that he was refusing to allow a curb cut onto Village Point Lane. You asked us specifically to revisit that and get a formal determination, so that's what we did. It is important to note, as we've indicated previously, that Village Point Lane is subject to the exclusive jurisdiction of the town's highway superintendent, and that's pursuant to chapter ninety-five of the Town of Amherst Town Code. It's also important to note that when the traffic and safety board last looked at this project during its meeting on January second of this year, it recommended the planning board approve the site plan, subject to both this board and the Town of Amherst considering the driveway from the project site under Village Point Lane. So the recommendation didn't require that, but did ask for it to be considered. We could go to the next slide, Keaton. So that's what we have. We met with, on February second, September second, made a detailed submission to Patrick Lucy, Town's Highway Superintendent. I provided him copies of all the updated project documentation that's been presented to the board, as well as a copy of the traffic impact study prepared by SRF Associates, and most recently updated last October, the review letters from SRF Associates, Fisher Associates, and then Tim Masters and myself met with him on September third to review the plans, review the project. Earlier today, he did issue a letter formally denying that request for a curb cut permit onto Village Point Lane. Not a surprising result, but so that now is in the record. It is important to note that going all the way back to last summer, the residents on Village Point Lane have always expressed opposition to that curb cut, but based on this board's input, we went back and did revisit that issue, and Mr. Lucy has reiterated his previous decision that no, he will not be allowing that driveway connection. Next. One of the other topics that came up, and this actually came up just today, is there was an email received from Christine and Daniel Hunt. They're the owners of the adjacent home to the south at eighty-one Evans, which is on the right-hand side. They specifically expressed a concern that they wanted to see the six-foot privacy fence extended, not so that it just connects back into the front or the rear of their garage, but so goes all the way to the west-eastern edge of the project site. I did reiterate in writing, we'd be willing to do that, and that's that purple line. So we'd be taking the privacy fence that previously was ten feet off along Evans and then jutted in back to the property line, and instead it would be located in its entirety ten feet off their property line. Our only requirement would be that they would enter into some type of maintenance agreement. It could be very simple, just that they would mow and maintain that green space, because now it would generally be inaccessible to us. I spoke to Mark Romanowski, the attorney for the residents, and I don't believe he responded, but he said he thought that was a good idea. I'll let someone chime in, but I do want to note, we responded to that comment we received today, and we're fine moving that fence ten feet off the property line. Next. One of the other topics that has come up, and specifically from the adjoining property owner on Village Point Lane, Mr. Heine, is whether or not the fence to be located on the eastern edge of the site, which is the back, will result in the removal of any trees on his property or on the project site. First and foremost, no trees will be removed from his property, we're only gonna do work on our site. Secondly, all those areas that are highlighted in yellow on this plan, those represent trees in, along the eastern property line shrubs that will remain in place, so we will not be removing any trees or shrubs along the common property line with Mr. Heine on Village Point Lane. As we've indicated previously, when the time comes to install that privacy fence along the back property line, we're more than willing to meet with him and the fencing contractor and determine precise location and specifics to ensure we can accomplish that goal. We want to reiterate that, we're aware of his concern relative to the potential removal of trees and vegetation, and we will not need to do that, especially trees in connection with the project. Next. This is simply a copy of the topographic survey. One of the topics that of course has come up is the northern building, three-story versus three-story middle segment with two-story the rest, and then finally tonight, two-story. Just to reiterate that the grade of the site topography along the Evans Street frontage as you head to the north, which is the right-hand side, does drop from the existing ground sign at an elevation of approximately six hundred fifty-one feet to six hundred forty-seven feet. Next. One of the topics that has been discussed in great detail previously by this board is the adopted Village of Williamsville Community Plan, or Comprehensive Plan. It's important to note that that was adopted by the Board of Trustees on April twelfth of two thousand ten, and then subsequently was amended on May twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. That community plan formed the basis of the zoning code, which formed the basis of the design standards, which is what our goal has been in terms of designing the project. Next. These are provisions or language within the Comprehensive Plan or Community Plan that we cited previously, but it is important to note that that plan did envision the creation of the NMU district and did allow projects specifically what we're proposing based on the criteria. Obviously, it didn't constitute preapproval of any projects, but it did set the framework and the objective criteria that apply to the review of proposed projects in that district by this board. Next. You can move past this slide. So the zoning map was adopted by the Board of Trustees subsequent to the adoption of the community plan, and as you can see, that area that's highlighted in orange representing the east side of Evans, that entire area from the project site to the northern edge of the Village of Williamsville was zoned NMU district. That includes our site, the existing condominiums on the quarter of SJ and Evans, Drexel Hill Apartments, and then the Georgetown Apartments. So it wasn't specifically this site only, this is one of only two areas, and the bigger areas that the, that the Board of Trustees designated as being appropriate for the NMU zoning district. Next. We spent a lot of time previously on discussing the intent and criteria specified in the neighborhood mixed use district. This is specifically the purpose of the neighborhood mixed use district, pulled directly from section one twelve, seventeen A one of the NMU design standards. It's also important to note that there was a letter. There was a letter submitted on behalf of the resident, specifically Elizabeth Holmes, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail later, citing what she believed were the criteria that applied to this board's decision-making. It's important to note that most of the language in that letter was not actually pulled from your code, it dealt with intent rather than specific criteria. Our project has been designed based on the very specific criteria specified in the code that is controlling intent, and looking back at other documents, is not the controlling criteria with respect to an application for site plan approval. Next. Section one twelve, seventeen A two is titled Neighborhood Mixed Use Zoning District Established. That is the actual creation of this particular district. It does clearly state that there's a need for clear standards, those are those objective standards that are specified in the code, and it also does establish a framework for the review of proposed projects. As I indicated before, we've indicated previously, we've specifically designed this project based on those objective standards in NMU district. That's what we're asking you to base your decision on. Obviously, we can discuss those specific criteria, we'll present them in a minute. Next. So within section one twelve, seventeen A five of the NMU design standards, which is entitled Design Objectives, it just incorporates those criteria or goals out of the Comprehensive Plan or Community Plan. We spent a lot of time on these, so I'm not gonna go through them again and again. You want to go to the next slide, Keaton? It is important that it notes that there can be higher density residential in the NMU district, specified that parking should be in the rear, utilities should be buried, setbacks should be consistent, traffic circulation should be considered, et cetera, et cetera. So we have considered these design objectives in terms of the design of the project, and the board had a lot of discussion about these specific objectives in connection with your environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Quarter Review Act. Next. So then talking about compliance with the very specific design standards in the NMU district. Think we've addressed all of them with two exceptions, we'll talk about we're seeking waivers for. Those include the parking standards specified in section one twelve, seventeen D two of the code. Our parking is located in the rear of the buildings. The zoning board of appeals did grant an area variance to allow less parking than would be, than otherwise would be required. Compliance with the landscaping standards specified in section one twelve, seventeen E one, E two, and E three of the code, those pertain to overall green space and landscaping, foundation landscaping, and buffers and screens. So we've designed the project to hit those criteria. Next. That's a copy of the landscape plan, that was included with our submission, and we are really showing extensive landscaping. So we've made a goal to minimize the removal of existing trees and landscaping on the site, but we are certainly supplementing that. We're showing forty-nine new trees, five different types, two hundred ninety-three shrubs, seven types, three hundred twelve perennials, four types, and then two thousand six hundred forty-two ground covers. So at the end, when this project site has been redeveloped pursuant to the proposed site plan, there will be extensive green space as well as extensive landscaping. Next. We've also talked a lot about the character of the site, and it's been characterized in many different ways, as being single-family residential, as being mixed use, as being other things, but in reality, it really is a mixed use area, because we have various uses located on various edges of the site. Obviously, this is an assisted living and enhanced living residence with fifty-seven private rooms. Those nearby uses include single-family homes to the west, south, and southeast, very large homes on large lots directly to the east along Village Point Lane. We have the attached townhome project located to the north on property zone NMU at the intersection of Evans and SJ, and then of course, right in the immediate vicinity, and actually across from a portion of the site, we have the Center Point Office Park, which is located in the Town of Amherst, and that is approximately three hundred fifty thousand square feet of office space. So it is a mixed use area, and that's important to note in connection with reviewing this particular application. Next. So this is the topic that I believe was discussed during the work session. Originally, our southernmost driveway was located closer to the adjoining home at eighty-one Evans, which is on the right-hand side of the diagram. Based on some input received from this board during your previous meetings, we did relocate that driveway slightly to the north. The reason we were able to do that is to provide some additional green space, separating the driveway at eighty-one Evans from the driveway on our site. It also did us, did allow us to provide that twenty feet of green space along the southern property line. line with 81 Evans. Go to the next slide. During your meeting last month, one of the board members asked us to take what was the headlight cross-section diagram and update it to provide for a truck, a truck with higher lights. So we've done that. We've added that 36-inch height angle, and then you can see the home directly across the street at 98 Evans. I believe the name of that owner was Mr. Valentine. I think he's on the call. That is the house located in gray with the new sidewalk located up to his front steps. We were also asked to provide a plan showing the spread of highlights for vehicles as they exit the site, the various driveways where they turn left and right, including that potential driveway connection under Village Point Lane, which you can see is on the top left-hand side of the diagram. Highway Superintendent Lucy has indicated he will not be allowing that driveway, but for both the northern driveway on Evans, which is on the left, and the southern driveway on Evans, which is on the right, you can see we've added that to that particular plan. So subsequent to your planning board meeting in August 3rd, we went back and actually tried to take a closer look at lighting impacts associated with the southernmost driveway onto Evans. These are photographs showing the existing nighttime lighting levels on that segment of Evans. There's actually a street light in close proximity to the homes at 88 and 98 Evans, and it really does light up that area quite bright at night. I was actually very surprised. So when viewing what would happen in terms of headlights, it's important to note that the lighting levels in that immediate vicinity at night are off actually quite bright. The actual traffic or the light standard directly to the north on the east side of Evans is actually out, so there's an additional light standard that is missing there. You can see the front of those homes, which are the homes opposite of where our southern driveway would be located, are relatively illuminated all night long. Next slide. And that's just showing those two homes directly straight on from the driveway location. Well, not the driveway location. The left is approximate driveway location, and the right is just straight on. 88 Evans is on the left. 98 Evans, which I believe is Mr. Valentine's home with the white truck, is on the right. And then on the right-hand side, that's looking straight on to the house at 98 Evans. So I went out there one evening a couple of weeks ago and backed in my 2012 Volkswagen Passat at the precise location of that southern driveway onto Evans. You can see the left-hand side, that shows lighting spreading generally into the driveway. I don't think any of the lighting actually went onto the house. And then the right-hand side looking straight on, you can see my headlights do illuminate a portion of the bumper of the white truck, but again, with a typical car, the headlight lighting does actually not light up either of the homes at 88 or 98 Evans. And that's with my specific vehicle, generally a mid-sized sedan with typical headlight or headlight height on the front. Next slide. So then also what we did is Matt Wong has a bigger vehicle, an SUV, it's a 2020 Hyundai Palisade Limited. So we did the same thing. We actually did this last evening. On the left, you can see his vehicle. He backed it in. This is as he's backing in to that exact location of the driveway, and then on the right, you can see his headlights. The headlights on his particular vehicle are noticeably brighter than mine. They're higher, and it's a newer vehicle, but again, it really does not light up that home at 98 Evans at all. The lighting is generally limited to about the sidewalk on the front yard. So we think in terms of lighting impacts associated with the southern driveway at night, the reality is there's not going to be adverse lighting impacts for two reasons. We have some photos, and we've actually been out to the site, and secondly, the existing lighting levels. Nonetheless, we're cognizant of the fact that Mr. Valentine has a concern. We've previously discussed if he would like to work with us and wants us to install some landscaping that he could select in his front yard.
Excuse me. I hate to interrupt, but I'd like to know who the Mr. Valentine is that you're proposing that you spoke to, because I have never spoken to anyone on this planning board, nor have I spoke to anybody, any attorney regarding this, or any of the builders that are proposing this.
No, no, Mr. Valentine, hold on. I wasn't saying I have spoken to you. What I was going to say is what we could do. So just give me one second. So I wasn't saying that I've spoken to you previously.
Well, someone mentioned that somebody was supposed to reach out to me, and nobody has reached out to me at this point.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion right now. So basically, what we'd be willing to do is if Mr. Valentine, and again, it's his front yard and his house, if he'd like to see us install some landscaping in his front yard, specifically along the front of those windows, we'd be more than willing to entertain that. Obviously, I think that would be separate from the site plan, but I did speak to Josh Lombas, who's on the call this evening from People Inc., and we would certainly be more than willing to do that. But I do want to note that we've looked at that issue, and we think in terms of adverse impacts, they certainly will not be potential, and in fact, it doesn't look like the lighting from vehicles, either a car or an SUV, will actually illuminate the front of that home. But again, we're willing to entertain that discussion, and if Mr. Valentine would like to see some landscaping planted in his front yard, there was previously a tree that was relatively recently removed, we'd be more than willing to do that.
I purposely have removed the tree. I've also removed all the landscaping purposely to clean up the look of the front of my house. So I've spent thousands of dollars to do this.
Yeah, this would be new landscaping, and of course, you would be involved in selecting it.
Oh, no, I have no interest in installing landscaping. I've removed all the landscaping.
Could you speak with Mr. Hopkins after the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Valentine, just so you know, I don't want to get distracted here, but I'm going to give you my cell phone number right now. My number is 510-4338, and you can feel free to call me anytime.
My number is 716.
Now what we're showing is the northern elevation that was presented during the planning board's meeting on August 3rd. As the board will recall, the middle segment of that building was three stories. The southern and northern segments were two stories. Other was concerns expressed specifically, I believe, from the planning board chairman that while the NMU zoning district does allow a 36-foot height, and this plan complied, some concerns about there still being any portion of that building that is three stories. Based on that concern and in connection with our concerted effort to really try and incorporate input received from this board, Matt and his team went back to the drawing board. We go to the next slide. Oh, and we'll get there in a second. If you go to the next slide, I think we talked about this, I'm sorry. There we go. So what we came up with was an updated elevation for the northern building, keeping in mind that the middle building and the southern building are already entirely two stories. So what Matt was able to work out is an updated elevation for the northern building by which the entire building in the middle segment will now be two stories. So we've made that change. The maximum height to the peak of the roof from any of the finished grade points along Evans is now 32 feet 8 inches, and that's to the peak of the roof, not the average roofline that's used to determine building height. At bays one and three, which would be from the left, the first bay, and then the third bay on the top of this diagram, he's also lowered the siding to the water table line that's based on some input, and we really think we varied the facade of not only the northern building, but as well as also the middle building and the southern building. So the top diagram here is our current proposal for the northern building. The middle diagram is what we presented to this board on August 3rd, and then the bottom is what we originally presented going back to earlier this year, when the building still was entirely three stories. So we've made a lot of modifications to that northern elevation based on the input received again and again. We've now finally able to design this so the entire building will be two stories. As I indicated, that required us to redesign the interior of the buildings, resulting in a reduction of the project density from 95 units to 93 units. Previously, we were at 97 units, so we've lost a couple more units, but we're okay with that. We think that's a big change and a compromise that addresses specific concerns raised by certain members of this board. Matt also prepared and we submitted an updated west and north elevation for the north building. Matt's reworked the materials for the northern facade to reflect those siding change for bay one, which is the northern segment of the building. We've added more detail to the background to demonstrate the various rooflines. If you're looking at this building heading to the south on Evans, it is important to note that, all of you know, there's a lot of green space that will remain separating the northern edge of our site and the condominiums on the corner of Evans and SJ. That will remain. So generally speaking, if you're traveling in a vehicle heading south on Evans, you're really not going to see the entire northern facade of this building, but nonetheless, we provided that. Matt, I don't know if you want to chime in at all with respect to this particular plan?
Yeah, sure. So what Sean, basically just to touch a little bit more on this and what Sean said before and touched on was the idea of having the three-story elevation versus the two and the three not fitting in on the Evans Street facade. Keaton, can you go back to the one before this? Yeah. So as Sean's said numerous times, and we've really talked about a lot, this site does move a lot from north to south along Evans Street. So in trying to make, one thing that we touched on last time was making the entire building accessible for all residents, which means that we have to keep our floor plate throughout as well as our egress stairs throughout on each end continuous with the corridor. What we were able to do, because the site slopes not only from north to south, but from west to east, we were able to take the front facade on Evans Street and lower that to two, like Sean said, and then work with the hill as if we're facing Evans, it works up and goes a hill towards the rear, which is currently higher, and in the back of the building, we keep that two-story look in the rear. So really, it was just massaging that middle area to make it work and to play with the grades and do it in a way that was more to the liking of the planning board comments. So we took those comments into consideration. We were able to achieve that, and we think we hit the nail on the head with this, what you wanted. Again, what Sean said, the first and the third bay, there were comments about making it more varied, we did bring the siding down, and I think in your planning board submission, I don't know if Sean has it in these slides as well, we have some colored elevations to show you.
We do.
That would, yeah, and that would show you the look of how we varied that. The north side, can you, Keaton, can you go to the next slide, please? So again, this mimics what the other sheet was, the bottom was from a previous planning board submission, the middle was the planning board submission prior to this one, and then the current one is the one above. So really, it's not changed all that much from last planning board submission to now on this side. What this does show, it really shows you that the roofs in the background, we illustrated a little bit better on the right-hand side of the plan than the upper right of the top plan. It shows you how those roofs do go up and down more versus what in the middle plan was. It showed that three-story high roof before. So yeah, that's pretty much it.
And we'll show you the color plan in a second. So we go to the next slide, Keaton. So that's an updated color elevation plan for the northern building, both the facade facing Evans and then the northern facade. And as you can see, Matt and his team, and this takes a lot of work each time we do it, especially in light of the grade, have now come back with a plan that really does break up the mapping, what we call those six individual bays, and reduces the height of this building in its entirety to two stories. It also does the best it can to match that existing grade, and the grade, of course, at the front of the site specifically on the northern edge is not the same as it is at the back of the building. So a lot of time and effort has been made here. We do actually appreciate the input that's been received from the planning board, and we think it's resulted in a much improved design for this northern building. Go to the next slide. So this is a copy of the color rendering that was submitted by Elizabeth Holmes with her letter dated August 3rd. It's important to note that we thought it was somewhat inaccurate. I'm not even saying it's deliberate. It's hard to do this, and obviously, they're not the design professional. So we wanted to take this and then actually turn it into something that we thought was a little bit more accurate. So if you go to the next slide. This is actually an accurate representation of that, and again, with it being a two-story building, you can see, we're looking at the northern building. On the southern edge, of course, because the grade is higher per the topographic survey, the building has a little bit taller appearance. That does match the grade on both the eastern and the western side of Evans, and then drops as you head to the north. So we think this is an accurate projection or diagram of what that building will look like on the site based on the existing grade. You can see, if you look on the left-hand side or the northern edge of the northern building, the grade is much lower along Evans Street than it is at the back of the building. That's what's required Matt to spend an inordinate amount of time and hours in designing that building. But again, we've incorporated the input, and thankfully, now it's entirely two stories. So Tim Masters went out and did, thank you very much, take a look at the height of the existing homes and other structures in the immediate vicinity. This is a diagram that he prepared. It is important to note that when you keep in mind the fact that now our northern building as well as our middle building and our southern building are entirely two stories, we're now really closely aligned with the height of those existing homes on the west side of Evans, and you can see the list of homes that are directly opposite the height, opposite the project site. They vary to the peak from 26 feet all the way to 32 feet. I believe 32 feet is that house located at the intersection of Evans and Belmont, which we discussed previously. Then there are also some light poles in that immediate vicinity. Those heights are noted. And then finally, at the bottom, the existing condominium project, which is two, three-unit buildings at 630 and 640 SJ, those are actually considerably taller. The height to the peak is 36 feet, and of course, that is the height allowed by the NMU District. So we think based on the changes that we've made, we now do finally have a building, residential appearance, breaks up the facade, various varied high-quality materials, and perhaps most importantly, height is consistent with the height of existing structures in the immediate vicinity. And that is simply the marked-up version of the Erie County Online Mapping App that Mr. Masters prepared to back up that table. So if you look at the actual NMU Design Standards, it has two examples of buildings. The first one being an appropriate residential building, which we're showing here, we presented you previously. We think the two-story building, the northern two-story building, now obviously much closely aligns the character, the idea, the design principle behind this. Then the next diagram, which is noted to be an inappropriate residential building. Obviously, our building looks nothing like this, and understand why the village would not want to see this on Evans or anywhere else in the village, but it is important to note that if you actually look at the visual aspects of NMU Design Standards, we really do have a building that now mimics what is intended in that district. So in terms of the criteria that govern this board's decision, those are specified in your very own code, specifically Section 112-23E3, which specifies in detail the criteria to be considered by this board in connection with the request for site plan approval. So we're going to walk through them briefly. We did address them last meeting as well. The first criteria is the requirements of the Village Development Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and/or official map. As I indicated, we are properly zoned. The NMU Design Standards were actually based on the village's adopted community or comprehensive plan, so we think we meet criteria A. Criteria B is the proposed location of principal and accessory buildings and other site improvements. All those are clearly noted on the fully engineered plans prepared by tree-to-engineers, and more importantly, reflect input that we received from this board over the course of now 11 meetings. Criteria C, relation to one another, traffic circulation within the site, heightened bulk of buildings, provisions for off-street parking space, provision of buffer areas and other open space on the site, so any development will adequately handle pedestrian and vehicle traffic within the site and in relation to the street system adjoining. So as I indicated, traffic impact study was prepared by SRF Associates, a reputable traffic engineering firm from Rochester, New York. This board deemed it appropriate to retain the services of an independent traffic engineer, specifically Timothy Faulkner of Fisher Associates. On January 2nd of this year, Mr. Faulkner issued a second comment letter that that stated, based on all the information provided, that concluded the initial traffic impact study, the comment response letter, and the additional capacity analysis provided by SRF Associates. It's our opinion, the results of the analysis and the conclusions that were reached adequately represent the anticipated impacts of the proposed bloker apartments development. So the village's own third-party traffic consultant agreed that traffic impacts had been addressed. There was a communication from Gina Wolkowski of the Erie County Department of Public Works. They have jurisdiction over Evans, which is an Erie County highway, confirming they determined the access in the traffic impact study was acceptable. We talked about the fact that Highway Superintendent Patrick Lucy will not allow a curb cut connection onto Village Point Lane. So traffic has been addressed in great detail as well as parking, buffer, green space, pedestrian access, et cetera, et cetera. So clearly, we think we meet that criteria. Criteria D is snow removal provisions. We are showing designated snow storage areas on the site plan, which I'll show you in a second. Criteria E is the location of permanent signage. It's important to note, we are not seeking planning board approval for any signage at this time. We acknowledge the fact that we'll have to come back to the planning board in the future once signage has been formulated. Criteria F, adequate off-street parking where applicable. We talked about the fact that the zoning board appeals granted an area variance on June 17th to allow 110 parking spaces. It is important to reiterate, the CBA did impose a condition that if a parking problem does ever result, that can be revisited. Our site plan shows more than adequate room to actually provide all the parking that would be required by the code. Criteria G, proper drainage and stormwater management pursuant to section 11228 of this code, road alignment and other aspects which may require review by engineering authorities. The village's consulting engineer, Edward Scherer of Williams Shutt Associates, on February 3rd did issue a comment letter to this board indicating that all the drawings incorporate his input, including the stormwater pollution prevention plan and the plans addressing water and sanitary sewer. And specifically downstream sanitary sewer capacity was also reviewed by the town of Ambrose Engineering Department and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. So this confirms that we have satisfied all technical requirements specified in the code. And as such, we've addressed that criteria as well. Next. So I would note there was a letter that was submitted to this board on August 3rd from Bruce Benson, expressing some concerns about drainage from our project on the existing Rosewood Villa condominiums at 630 and 640 S J. I know Bruce very well, but it is important to note that he is not a licensed engineer. I believe his letter was forwarded to Ed Scherer, the consulting engineer from Williams Shutt Associates. And if you look at the bottom point parts of that, uh, slide, it does confirm he looked at that letter and that it's his opinion that by installing an onsite stormwater management system that will comply with the stringent stormwater quality and quantity standards of both the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the Village of Williamsville, that drainage will be directed into that system. We're currently, obviously given the age of this site, there is no code compliant drainage system. So in fact, we'll be improving the runoff situation with respect to adjoining properties. All of our stormwater from impervious surfaces, building rooftops, access aisles, driveways, parking areas will be conveyed into our onsite stormwater management system. That system has been designed and approved to handle a hundred-year storm event and also to comply with stormwater quality requirements. So I think we very clearly have addressed that criteria. Next. That is the site plan designating those snow storage areas. The code doesn't specify how you determine how big those areas need to be. So Treetop Engineers, the only code that could provide in Western New York that designated how to determine those sizes is the Village of Ellicottville, which obviously receives more snow. So those snow storage areas have been designed to accommodate the standards in the Village of Ellicottville, uh, village code. So they're clearly more than adequate in terms of size and location, thereby confirming again that that criteria dealing with adequacy of snow storage areas onsite has been addressed. Next. So continuing on to the criteria specified in section 112 dash 23 E3 of the code, the next criteria is H, lighting. So we have demonstrated compliance with the applicable standards. A lighting plan was prepared by Treetop Engineers. Importantly, it confirms that there will be zero lighting spillover on any of the adjoining properties. That includes properties located to the north, to the east, to the west, and to the south. Of course, the west being Evans frontage. So there will be zero foot channels along those property lines. All the lighting fixtures to be installed onsite will be dark sky compliant. Lot surface is the next criteria. It is important to note that approximately 50% of our site will be green space after the project is completed. Criteria K is landscaping. We've already discussed the fact that our landscaping plan demonstrates compliance with the extensive landscaping standards specified in the N M U zoning district. Criteria O is the last criteria that applies. Both M and N apply to the R3M district and the M U district. Criteria O says, with respect to any application relating to a lot or lots within the N M U district, conformance with the applicable neighborhood mixed-use district design standards as set forth in section 112 dash 17. As I indicated, we've spent a lot of time demonstrating compliance with a wide assortment of criteria specified in that document. It's approximately 40 something pages of standards. And with the exception of two waivers, we've addressed and satisfied all of them. Next. So moving on in terms of those standards actually specified in the village's design standards for the neighborhood mixed-use district, again, there's many separate categories. Um, site plan and design standards, we've demonstrated compliance in terms of building orientation, setbacks, entryways, sidewalks, location of driveways and access, et cetera. Compliance with the N M U site infrastructure and facility standards specified in section 11217 C2, three and four, including loading service, maintenance and refuse facilities, stormwater and green infrastructure facilities, as well as utilities. It's also important to note that section 11228 of the village code also includes some very detailed criteria or standards for onsite stormwater management and our plans, including the engineer's report, and SWIP demonstrate compliance with those criteria as well. Next. We've demonstrated compliance with the parking standards. We've talked about that, the landscaping standards, we've talked about that previously. Next. We've also demonstrated compliance with the architectural standards, including architectural consistency standards specified in section 112 dash 17 F2 of the code, uh, building form enassing, maximum allowable footprint, allowable height, compliance with the architectural detail standards specified in section 11217 G2 through six of the code, including building base and foundation, welding, windows, roofs, doors and entries, materials. We've talked about the lighting standards specified in section 11217 I2 through four of the code. We've addressed those criteria as well. Next. So there's only two instances in which we don't comply with those standards specified in section 11217 of the code, the design standards for the neighborhood mixed-use district. And they are as follows. Number one, the setback southern side of the south building is 50 feet. Uh, that's 10 feet greater than would be permitted. It's important to recall that that request or that modification was made based on input received from the adjoining property of 81 Evans, as well as this board to increase the amount of green space and increase the driveway setback from the southern property line, which is shared with 81 Evans. And then secondly, the front yard setback of the north building is at 25 feet, which is five feet greater than is permitted. So we made that change. The goal of that change was at that time, the building did include a third floor, but to provide some variation in terms of the front yard setbacks along Evans. So we've made those two changes. It's also important to note that if you actually look at the underlying N M U design standards, the maximum allowed front yard building setback is 10 feet. With an exception, if there's public realm amenities, we've discussed that previously. We're proposing those. So that justifies all the way back to 20 feet. But for that additional five feet for the northern building, we do need a waiver pursuant to section 11223H of the code. Next. And that's to illustrate those two waivers, uh, looking at the bottom left, the front yard setback of the northern building, again, set at 25 feet from the Evans Street right away. And then the side yard setback of the southern building set at 50 feet, allowing us to provide that 20 feet of green space along the entire southern property line. Talked about the fact that there's varied setbacks, you can see them on this plan. But if you think about setbacks as measured from the pavement, the north building will have a setback varied from 44 to 48 feet. The middle building 29 to 33.25 feet. And then the southern building, 33 and a half to 33.42 feet. So there will be a little variation. We think it will make the appearance along Evans Street, uh, more interesting and provide some diversity to the buildings. Next. Section 11223H describes the criteria that apply in connection with your review of requests for waivers. And I've highlighted the section that really applies. One, the planning board may in its discretion waive or vary the provisions set forth in such design standards, provided that the applicant shall, to the maximum extent practicable, mitigate any adverse consequences associated with such failure to adhere to said design standards. So both of those waivers are being requested based on input we've received. There are no adverse consequences associated with those two waivers. We think in fact they make the layout of the project better. But it is important to note that if those waivers were not granted by this board, obviously we'd go back to what we previously had and we could comply with both the underlying standards. We would ask in light of the fact that it's based on input we received, that you grant specifically the two requested waivers. Next. So that basically wraps up our presentation, but I want to come back to one important point. And it deals with the criteria that apply. We think it's clear as day, the criteria that apply are specified in the code, specifically 11217. We think we provided very substantial evidence demonstrating that we comply with those criteria. As I indicated previously, uh, there was a letter, some comments made by the council for the residents that suggested that, well, really when taking a look at a site plan application, you should look at case law, you should take a look at other standards. It's important to note that that's not how site plan criteria work. Uh, New York State Village Law very clearly indicates that it's up to each municipality, including this village, to establish your site plan criteria. You've done that, we've demonstrated compliance. So that really is the controlling fact. Uh, we would welcome any questions or input this board would have. We do appreciate the opportunity to present this project once again. Respectfully, we are asking that you would consider granting site plan approval along with the two waivers and architectural approval based on the current plans that are before this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, any?
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions? Or is?
Wes, sorry, I, I have a question for the applicant because unless I'm mistaken, I think Kate has still not been able to join us.
I don't think so. I texted her earlier and haven't heard again, so.
Kevin's point earlier, I, I certainly generally agree that ideally we would have a full board making a decision on this project and every project when we can get one. Um, the, the, however, because approval requires a majority of the entire board, no matter what, frankly, the only disadvantage to not having a full board is to the applicant. So I think I would like to know what the applicant, how the applicant feels about the fact that we may have only six members voting tonight, if they still want to go forward under those circumstances or not.
Yeah, so Chip, Chip, this is Sean. We were hoping obviously there'd be a full board. We understand that people have other commitments and the COVID-19 pandemic complicates everyone's lives. In light of the fact that we really think we've made some substantial changes once again, based on the input received from August, and also in light of the fact that we've been at this now for an 11th planning board meeting, subject to any questions and comments the planning board may have, we would ask that you move forward and issue a decision this evening.
Sean?
Yes.
Can you talk about the snow removal again? Is it just piling up or is there going to be removal?
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Lester, it would be snow storage areas designated on the site. But of course, we recognize the fact that from time to time, we get various large snowstorms uh, in Western New York, not as much so in Ambrose and Williamsville as other municipalities south of us. But if there is one of those snow events, obviously, we would have to utilize equipment to remove snow on the site. So we're prepared to do that when it happens. It doesn't happen very often, but if and when it does, of course, that's what we'll do. But we do have large onsite designated snow storage areas. And again, the code doesn't specify how large they are, but Treetop Engineers to its credit found a standard in the Village of Ellicottville code, and we've designed based on that standard. And obviously, that's in the heart of snow country.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Matt, which really doesn't have much to do with our approval or not approval, but this project costs $31 million. And I know you've done quite a few things for projects for People Link. Is a third of a million dollars a common budget number for your projects? For a bedroom, a third of a million dollars for one bedroom?
Um, I don't know the exact answer to that, but I think this falls very much in line with other projects that we've done recently with construction costs. Yes, but I don't, it's plus or minus, and it also depends on what the specifics are for this project. This is a very intensive site with the grading, uh, the materials that were actually, I mean, I'm not going to say forced being used, I like that we have to use them because it makes a project look nicer. So for me, it's great. Um, and those all drive up costs. Also remember that we had one building fronting Evans Street to begin with. And when we broke them up into three, that had a lot of duplicative MEP. Uh, added a lot of, uh, other elevators and it added more exterior materials as a result. So yeah, that did drive costs a little bit. But yes, this is pretty typical plus or minus for what we see from these projects. Yes.
Okay, this isn't a way out of line project, just.
No, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go in for funding if it wasn't a fundable project. So this is within the parameters of what is fundable for our, the criteria, the funding that we go through.
Okay. And I, I, last meeting, I'd also asked, uh, Mr. O'Neil what the timetable is for this, whether this project goes forward or not, when Bloker Home is going to. Just because I get a lot of questions, I'm sure the other board members get questions about that. Again, it has nothing to do with our decision, just out of sheer curiosity. What is the timetable for Bloker Home?
So Wes, this is Sean speaking. There is currently not a timetable. Dan O'Neil did issue, did send me an email. So that's still a work in progress. Obviously, as you noted, doesn't fall within the jurisdiction of this board, but currently at this point in time, uh, there is no set closure date for Bloker.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wes?
Yes.
My concern is that, um, the last meeting, we indicated that we wanted a full board voting on it. And now we're saying it's not necessary and that could come back to haunt us. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. Um, I've been texting with Kate. Um, she, it's going to be at least another 30 minutes before she'd be able to join us. She's still at a full board meeting and they're still chugging along with that, so.
Are we, is Kate, with Kate, does that make us a full board that makes us six, correct?
Kate makes us seven, we have six right now.
Well, I guess, uh, I don't see. Okay, Chuck's on, I guess. Okay, you're going to listen to the top of his head.
I mean, it's, you know, Chip asked.
Yes, I'm here. Chuck's here. I'm listening.
You see the top of your head.
I'm sorry.
You know, Wes, again, as, as I said, I, I think I agree it would be preferable. But as I said, the, the, when, when there's not a full board, disadvantage in that is to the applicant. Because regardless of how many people are here. Because regardless of how many people are here, the majority of the entire board would need to vote on an approval. So if the applicant is willing to move forward, which I do not think was the case last time, then I think it's okay to move forward. Although, again, I agree that ideally, we would have a full board, we would always have a full board. It's been a problem, frankly, lately.
We'll reiterate, last time, it was at the applicant's request that we did not have a vote last time.
And to reiterate.
Yeah, I guess, this is Sean, the only thing I would note is, you know, part of that request at the previous meeting was, we had, you know, we were continuing to make changes, we wanted to provide the additional opportunity for input. Again, our goal is that we would have you vote this evening. We, of course, would prefer a full board as well, because someone who's not there is basically a no vote, because we need four votes either way. So we do, again, if you have additional questions or input that we need to consider, we're certainly open to that. We think we've finally now advanced this project over the course of the past 15, 16 months, so that we really clearly have demonstrated that not only we have addressed the site plan criteria, but we've really made a concerted effort to address the input provided by this board again and again. And again, it's been a reiterated process, and we appreciate the input we receive, but we think we're finally there.
Oh, Wes?
Yes.
Only because I think Sean had mentioned that Elizabeth Holmes' letter of August 3rd is somewhat, I don't want to say misleading, because I can't remember exactly what Sean said in reference to that, but I wonder, is Ms. Holmes on, and would you consider allowing her to, to speak to that?
Hi. Yes, I think if she's on, yes, she can have a few minutes.
I am on.
Okay.
So I did listen to Sean's presentation. I believe what he's referring to with respect to my August 3rd submission would be the massing analysis that we submitted. Sean, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm generally referring to, Liz, is, you know, there's a part of your letter that says the planning board should be guided by case law as well as planning objectives, and basically what we're saying is, the Village Code specifies in great detail the objective criteria to be considered. We think the decision-making should be based on that, rather than citing cases that are based on different standards and different codes throughout New York State. I think that's basically what I'm saying.
Sure, sure.
I'm not specifically saying your mass, I'm not specifically referencing your massing study, and as I indicated, that was based on when we were originally proposing the three-story building. As recall, we changed that prior to the August 3rd meeting. So I wasn't taking the position that that was an attempt to deliberately mischaracterize the building. The building has changed since that point in time.
Sure, understood, and, you know, we have reviewed the recent submission, reducing the building from three to two stories. With respect to the August 3rd submission, I would reiterate that everything that we presented still holds true, particularly with respect to the case law that we referenced. That was with respect to the planning board's overall policy concerns, and whether a change, an irreversible change in the neighborhood would result with respect to an approval of this project, which all of the case law and all of the points that we cited in that letter still hold true, particularly with respect to the overall scale and density of the project as proposed, and its effect on the small historic neighbors in the, homes in the village and across the street on Evans Road. And the objectives that we cited in that August 3rd submission are within the own code, that the planning board must consider that the building, if erected, would be in harmony with the purpose of this chapter, would not be visually offensive or inappropriate by reason of striking visual discord in relation to the site or surroundings, would not impair the use, enjoyment, and desirability, and reduce the values of the properties in the area, or be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. So those are objectives that govern this planning board, regardless of the case law that's set forth in that letter. And we would rely on all of the factual submissions by both myself, as well as my clients in the submission from this morning, outlining, outlining all of the ways that this project would result in an irreversibly detrimental impact on this small and historic village neighborhood. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Sorry, I was muted. Any other questions?
I have a question. It's Ron Trugilio. And it's in regard to the lighting study that was done by the, the headlights study. And, so this would probably be to either Sean or Matt, but I think Matt might be able to answer it. Where and when does this site start to flatten out in the back? Because it's, it's all well and good, we're showing the car at the street, but it's also a problem going back a ways, or it could be a problem. And it's only if it starts to level out at some point, and I'm not clear from the images we saw, we didn't see an updated grading plan, where that might happen.
Yeah, I'm here. This is Matt Long. Let me pull up my grading plan, so I have one to reference when I'm speaking to this. Right, so at the driveway in question, which is the southern driveway and the one that we took images of, we are heading from the rear of the parcel, where the parking lot hits the driveway. We are at roughly 674 feet at the beginning of that driveway where it butts the parking lot. When we hit the street, we are roughly at, I'm going to say 668. So we're about six feet of grade change difference. So we're going to be heading downhill, coming out of that parking lot, which would help it even more. That means the angle in the headlights is going to be going down. Then, if you look back at our study, we show how far those lights actually, like when we showed that little cone, I don't know if we can bring that up again, if anyone has that presentation to show, but if you remember, we showed that sort of light cone and how far it extends, and we demonstrated that with our photos, we're going to be way the heck back on the site, so that should never have any impact. And I think it actually helps it, like I said, that we are heading downhill. So it would even further, further mitigate the impact.
And Keith, if you want to pull up that plan, it was page 25 of the presentation.
Just give me one minute, I'm jumping back on here.
I got it. Yeah, I just got to pull it up on the screen share. Page 25, you said?
Yeah, page 25. I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't know you had the presentation.
That's okay.
There you go.
Right.
Yeah, you were on it, right there.
This one?
So even, yeah. Okay, so, so what we're showing here, then, is we're showing a car as it sits, with its nose basically directly at the curb line, so it's basically any, any way a person would pull out of a driveway, typically driving. When you are looking at that specific car that Tim has his pointer on right now, to the right of that is that yellow, is if I were making a left out of that driveway, and if I, to the left of that pointer, is if I'm making a right out of the driveway. And that gives us the typical sort of range of headlights, how far they extend from a typical car. So if you're, what I was speaking to, that parking lot, which is up the page and up that driveway, Tim, could you point to it a little, yeah, right there. So where that driveway hits the parking lot, we are about six feet higher than where we are at the street. So basically, we are heading downhill, which then further helps us mitigate that impact, because the headlights will be facing basically into the ground at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, John.
This is, this is Sean. The only thing I want to reiterate is, with respect to the, the southern driveway and illumination levels, number one, I think Matt and I can both confirm, we're pretty surprised at what the lighting levels are there, again, because of the street lighting. It's quite bright, and we took both our vehicles, we backed them onto the site, which means they were higher than they would otherwise would be, because the driveway's not there. And I think the photos really illustrate the fact that it's not going to result in lighting spillover onto those homes directly across the street at 98 Evans, and then the house to the south at 88 Evans. The other thing I would note is, there's been comments made that, hey, there's going to be 80 vehicles with headlights going out. If you look at the actual traffic impact study for the weekday PM peak hour, which is approximately from 5:00 to 6:00, a little bit earlier, although during December and January, that will be at nighttime, the number of vehicles exiting that site at the PM peak is 10 during that hour. So it would be 10 vehicles during the peak hour at winter time, where there would be lighting impacts at that driveway. During summertime, the peak hour would occur during daylight. And if that owner, if that owner does want us to install some landscaping, they suggested they did not, but if they want us to, we would certainly do that, and we collaborate work with them so they could decide what they want. But again, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary for light.
This is Chris Valentine, the owner of 98 Evans. The landscaping proposition, I don't think is a solution. I've installed new windows in the front of my property so I can look out of them and not be blinded by landscaping. I do want to speak a little bit about the evening events last evening, where a car pulled in across the street, and then we went outside to question why lights were, you know, somebody was in the, the yard of the vacant lot, and we thought it was teenagers goofing around as they sped off. So if it was you guys as part of this design effort, I thought it would have been nice that you could come across, introduce yourselves, and let us know that you were performing an ad hoc study to see what it looked like. If you'd like to see what it looks like, everybody can watch right now as I pull my car across the street and shine the lights on my own house.
Yeah, we, I think we, I don't think we saw you, it was Matt and I that were there last night, we were there about 9:00 PM, and I didn't really think it was probably appropriate on a Labor Day evening to call you, but we wanted to put you there. I previously parked my, I previously parked my car there.
Unannounced either.
No, we were on the project site, which, you know, our client owns, so your point's well taken. We would gladly, again, discuss with you. We were there for about four minutes, and we absolutely did not speed up. We just said we were fine, and then we left. We tried to do that as early as possible.
I'm just making the board aware of what happened last night.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly what we said we did. We went out there and took those photos.
I invite the board to come out and run their own headlights study. You don't have to announce yourself, just please do it yourself, so you can see the impact on my own home.
Hey, Chris, this is, this is Chris Hunt across the street from you. I just opened our front door, and your house is pretty dark. There's no illumination, the only headlights, the only streetlights in front of 81, closer to the 75 Evans driveway, your house and Matt's house across the street are not illuminated.
Yeah, with headlights, they are.
I disagree with them stating that.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at, all I would say is, if you look at slide 26, that's a photograph of the lighting out there at night. I mean, if you want to pull that up, that's.
I have no problem with the existing lighting, and I have, I have a problem with a car's headlights beaming through my front porch windows that I just installed.
Yeah, I think what we've demonstrated is that won't occur.
No, Chris, what I was saying is that the, those pictures are not properly showing the illumination. There is no illumination on your house right now, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, it's because of their headlights that are showing illumination on the house.
Yeah.
No, 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 I want, I want it, no, I want to make this clear. So this photograph that's up now, that's not headlights, that's existing lighting levels. I took this photograph, and I walked, rode my bike, I didn't drive my car. Those are the existing illumination levels with no cars. And they're actual photos that I took with my, with my camera. So they are what they are.
But they're not adjusted for the light, they're, they're adjusting the light level. If I look out my front door, like, like I just did, Sean, it's dark over there. It's not that light.
Well, maybe the, unless the streetlight level has been changed, these are photographs I took within the past month. If you look at that, if you look at those, if you look at those photographs, you can see, I believe it's Mr. Valentine's white truck, I mean, it's pretty illuminated at night, based on the streetlight. And again, more importantly, our headlight photographs show that the headlight illumination will actually not spill over onto the front of those homes at 88 and 98 Evans.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members?
Yeah, this, this is Sean, and there is one other topic I want to just bring up, because I believe Ms. Hunt, the adjoining property owner at 81 Evans, is on the line. We did receive your email, asking us to consider installing the fence such that it would be 10 feet off the property line, along your entire property. I guess all we're asking is, if that's what you want, that's what we'll proceed with. The plan that we presented this evening showed that change that you requested. So we, I don't think we ever received confirmation if that is, that is what you want, but if you want that, we'll certainly do it.
It is, but it's something that would have to be discussed. It's greater detail, because I would want it perpetually to the next owner, I wouldn't not want to lose that right to the next person, wouldn't be fair.
Nope, that would, and, yep, and that would, that would be fine. We can work out those details, that would be fun.
Some sort of maintenance agreement for that 10-foot strip?
Yeah, and I think what Ms. Hunt, I think what Ms. Hunt is saying is that if she ever sold that property, she wants to make sure that the subsequent owner would have that same benefit, and what we're saying is, yes, they would.
Okay, that sounds good. Any other questions?
Yes. I guess I'd like to get a feeling what some of the other board members feel about voting without a full board. The reason I say that is because last meeting, we said we weren't going to vote because we didn't have a full board.
Right.
And I'm, I'm, I think we're going to be, I think we should be hold, hold to that, because we're going to be criticized if we vote without a full board. That's my thought, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
How does the rest of the board feel?
I would like to move for a vote tonight. I mean, I think last, last month, we didn't vote, and Sean did not want the vote at that point, because they were making changes, but I think at this point, they've made changes that we've asked them to make, and I don't see what the value is in, in not voting. You know, it seems like every month, there's one person, two people who can't attend a meeting, and I don't think that postponing it is going to change that situation, unless, I don't know. I mean, I, I think voting with six is, is what we have available, and we should vote.
And again, the, the, the risk is to the applicant. It, it's, it, as Sean said, any, that seventh vote is a no vote, it's an automatic no vote. So it's a different situation we were dealing with previously. Again, it's not ideal, but it's certainly not unprecedented. And New York State Village Law certainly allows it, that's why it provides that an approval needs a majority of the full board, regardless of how many people are present.
So if the vote, vote was three to three, it's a denial, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Wally Pacer. As I said in the work session, I'm really deeply troubled by the letter of an Amherst resident, yeah, that was circulated to the planning board, that suggests maybe any denial.
that suggests maybe any denial would be simply done because the people of Williamsville, quotes, don't want certain people, they see they're undesirable, to live in their midst. That is low and moderate, possibly non-white and/or disabled. Close quotes. But I think that's an affront to this board's decision-making power and the residents of the village, especially, yeah, all those who have, yeah, written, requesting that this be denied. But in any event, I think the full board needs to vote, yeah, on this project, especially given that kind of thinking that we might, yeah, somehow consider the people that, yeah, yeah, would be residents of the consequence of, yeah, of our decision-making.
Okay.
Wally, I, I agree with your comment regarding that letter. But I do feel like over the course of the past year, I mean, it's very clear that our decision-making process needs to be based on the criteria of the code and the community plan and not necessarily any individual's feelings about the emotional merits of the project. I'll put it that way, right? We're here to decide based on site plan and architecture review, not based on whether we like bloker closing, whether we like low-income housing. Those are, those are not the issues we need to focus on.
And I, I agree. Again, I'm insulted by the tenor of the letter. And I think we all should be, as should the good citizens of the village who oppose, yeah, this project. But I think it's appropriate, given this, to make sure everybody is on record as to how they, yeah, would vote and that we have a full board.
I agree with Wally on that. I mean, we said that last meeting, we're not going to vote because we don't have a full board. And I just, I believe with that, we said and we should stick to it.
But we can't control who does and doesn't come to a meeting.
I guess we should, I guess we should not have made that statement last week then, or last meeting.
But Kevin, I'm sorry, I've explained, the reason the applicant has a say in that process and they requested that because for them, it's a risk. If they're okay going forward with it, New York State law certainly allows it.
I understand.
So then I don't, I, I don't understand. Nobody ever suggested as a blanket rule that we can't, that less than a full board can't vote on any project. If that were the rule, we'd have, we'd have difficulties because we very often don't have a full board.
Okay, I just texted with, with Kate and the school board's still going. So she's not going to be able to join us anytime shortly here. Any other, Ron or Chuck, do you have any?
I'm okay with going forward with the vote.
So am I, Wes.
I am as well. I think that's four of us that would like to go ahead with vote, to vote.
Yep.
Can I suggest somebody make a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do, so we're gonna do site plan first, okay?
Well, don't we have variances, don't we have variances to do or?
Yeah, the two waivers.
You, you can, you can do those separately or you can make those as part of, I mean, they're site plan waiver requests. They're not architectural. So as part of your site plan review, that could include granting those waivers or not. But I don't, I, I think that can be part of the same motion, although if you want to do them separately, that's fine too. However you want to do it.
All right. I have to, I'm sorry, I have to find my agenda for the...
I can read you the log number if that's what you want.
That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for the log number.
It's log 2019 dash PB dash 6A and 6B. I believe 6A is the site plan. If anybody has any thoughts. I don't know if Deb knows.
I don't have the agenda.
Well, for the sake of argument, 6A is going to be the site plan tonight.
Yeah, if you start, I'll find out before this is over.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion on 2019 dash PB 6A site plan approval for the Bloker Homes project to approve it as presented at tonight's meeting on September 8th, 2019, including the two waivers that the applicant has asked for, the front yard setback for the north building and the side yard back on the south portion of the project.
And if you're, if it's okay, I have two other items I'd like to add to that approval. There's a fence along the south property line that would be extended from where it is presently shown near Evans to the rear property line, 10 feet off the property line. And the second one would be, the applicant is going to meet with the homeowner on one of each property line about the location of that fence back there. There's a fence shown on the site plan, but we'll coordinate with the, with the homeowner where that's going to go. Okay, thanks. Is there a second on the motion?
I, I have one thing I would like to add as well. If it's okay, Amy, is that the applicant meets with the owner of 98 Evans to go over their findings and if necessary, makes minor adjustments to that, to the driveway. I, I thought they did a very good job explaining it, but there seems to be some concern and discrepancy over the way the study was done. And as long as they meet and they talk it through, I'd rather that, see that as part of it.
Okay, I, just so you know, I see Kate just joined us. We're just making a motion, or Amy was just making a motion to approve the site plan for this project. Now that we have the motions, are there a second on the motion?
I, I'll second it if I get that addition.
Done.
Okay.
So, I think we need to read back the motion so Kate understands what she is.
I think that's a, that's a good idea, Wes. And just so I'm clear also, Amy, there were, there were, Wes was, so are you okay with the modifications that were, the additional conditions that were suggested by Wes and Ron to your motion?
Yeah, yes, yes. The two fence issues and the lighting. Definitely.
So Deb, can you read that back?
Is to approve as submitted at this meeting on 9/8/2020 with granting of the two waivers. One waiver is for the fence to be 10 feet off.
I think we need to, the waiver, the waivers for the two setbacks, two building setbacks.
Okay, waiver is for, so the first waiver.
Is the front setback on the north building.
Front setback on the north building. And the second waiver.
Is the side yard setback on the south portion of the property.
Side yard setback, the south portion of the, which building?
The south building.
Of the south.
And if you could just note, the maximum, the maximum side yard setback is 40 feet and they're proposing 50. So the waiver is for 10 feet from the south building. And then the front yard for the north building, the maximum setback is 20 feet and they're proposing 25. So it's a five-foot waiver.
And just so we're being as precise as we can here, right? So when you say as presented tonight, we are talking about the site plan as depicted on drawing C2, right, with a revision of eight? Can I, I'm sorry, it's too dark in here for me to read this. So what's the, which drawing are we talking about here?
Looks like 882.
Yeah, no, this is, this is Sean. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So it's actually, we submitted an updated plan dated today that moved that fence so that the fence along the southern property of 81 Evans in its entirety is 10 feet off the property line. So I think I would reference the revised plan drawing C2 dated today.
Okay. And does that note a revision date on it of today's date?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
Yeah, we just want to make sure if, if it's approved, we want to make sure we've got the right drawings on file.
Yep, that, that is the correct drawing.
Okay, so be revision number three with today's date on that sheet C2.
That's correct, Chairman.
Can you repeat that? I don't have the plans in front of me. So what is the revision, what is the page number that you are referring to?
It's drawing number. Drawing number C2, site layout plan, that will show, show three revision dates on it. The latest revision, revision number three, will be dated today.
9/8/2020.
And as Wes indicated, the, the difference between that and the previous drawing is essentially, it shows the fence being extended all the way back to the back of the line on the southern boundary. Well, 10 feet off the southern boundary, 10 feet north of the southern boundary. Did I get that right, Sean?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
So it shows the fence being extended all the way to the back?
Yes.
It, it shows the, it shows the entire fence on the southern portion of the site being 10 feet from the shared property line with 81 Evans.
Okay. Are there any other?
Although, there was also that the, the homeowner along the east property line, there's a fence that's proposed along there. When that fence is installed, the developer will meet with the homeowner to discuss exactly where to put that fence.
And the fence is installed, the applicant will meet with the homeowner?
Right, or coordinate with the homeowner at the exact location. Basically, they don't, they don't want to take any trees or bushes down back there. So they want to talk about where the fence will be located.
And that's, this is Sean, that's the east property line.
East property line. And the, and the site plan does show a fence there, but it's the exact location will be determined at a later date.
Yep, and we're fine with that as well.
And then, I believe.
So that's the motion.
Well, right, but also, sorry, just to make sure, Deb, you have, and the other condition is that the applicant will meet, coordinate with the owner of 98 Evans to discuss driveway, potential driveway alignment issues or screening issues. Right, Wes, that was your condition?
That was Ron.
Oh, Ron, I'm sorry. Ron, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, so that's the motion that Amy made. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it, Ron.
I have Amy made the motion, Ron seconded it.
Is there another discussion on the motion?
This is strictly for the two, two waivers.
This is for the site plan itself and the two waivers.
Can we handle those separately?
You, you can. I, I advise that I think it was okay to, to do them together or separately, however you want to do it. And if it would certainly make any difference for any, the way anybody would vote, you probably should do it separately.
I would like to do it separately.
Okay, so if, Amy, if that's okay, this motion will be just for the two waivers? Is that the order we need to do? Or do we need to, we need to do the site plan first? I think you're, Chip, I think you're muted.
Sorry. In that case, yes, I would do them separately, each waiver separately then.
Each waiver separately, but the two waivers before the site plan?
I, yeah, because if, because if they don't get the waivers, then the site plan is going to have to be modified.
Doesn't.
You know, to go back to what would conform to the code.
Okay.
That, that north building would have to come forward five feet and, and the, what, south building would have to move too, right?
South, yeah, okay. So Amy, if that's okay with you, if you'd like to reword your motion, and we'll talk about the first waiver and then the second waiver and go from there?
Sure. All right. I will make a motion on 2019 PB 6A site plan review for the Bloker project to approve the waiver increasing the front yard or front setback on the north building from 20 to 25 feet. So a waiver of five feet.
There's a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions on the motion?
It was Chuck, Deb. Yes. Chuck, I will, yep, Chuck, seconds.
There's no other comments or questions. Deb, could you take a roll call?
Mr. Rizone?
Yes.
Mr. Trigilio?
Yes.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Lester? On mute?
No, no.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer? Mr. Pacer?
No.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman Culpa?
Yes.
Five to two.
Five to two, the first waiver passes. Okay. Amy, if you would please go ahead with the second waiver?
All right. I will make a motion on 2019 PB 6A site plan review for the Bloker project to approve the waiver increasing the side yard setback on the south border of the property from 40 feet to 50 feet. So a waiver of 10 foot. 10 feet.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Amy, I, I think it would be helpful if you, if you stated why you believe that the waiver is appropriate.
I, I feel like the waiver is appropriate due to the density of the project and that this is going to be, that it's not the taller than I, well, I feel it's not any taller than the surrounding properties. It definitely does reach a larger dimension and therefore increasing the property setback from the residential houses seems appropriate to me. It also allows to move the driveway further from that residential property next door.
Sure. Can we have a second on the motion? Any other discussion on the motion? Deb, if you could please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Rizone?
Yes.
Mr. Trigilio?
Yes.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Lester?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer?
Mr. Pacer?
You're muted, Wally.
I, I just noticed that, no.
Ms. Alexander?
Yeah.
Ms. Waterman Culpa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy, if you'd like to continue, please?
All right, I will make a motion on 2019 PB6A site plan review for the Bloker project to approve the site plan as presented on September 8th, 2020 in accordance with drawing C2. That includes the two previously approved waivers as well as the fencing adjustment on the south and the agreement by the applicant to meet with the property owner on the east in regards to where the location of that fence will be, as well as to meet with the property owner of 98 Evans to discuss the lighting issue coming out of the south driveway.
Is there a second?
I will second, Wes, to Rizone.
Any other comments or questions on the motion?
I would like to know, is this as submitted, you said as presented, Amy, is this as submitted on the drawings that were delivered in our packets, I believe it was Friday, that are dated 2, 5, 20 as revised, 8 as revised, 7, 27, 20, and 8, 18, 20?
There's, there's a, they submitted a slight revision today, we, we're discussing that. So there's a, there is another version of this drawing, same drawing you just referenced.
I didn't receive that, when was that disseminated?
Tonight, at the meeting, and, and.
At the meeting, do we have paper copies of that?
I have not, I don't know, but if you bear with me, that all, the only difference it shows is the fence line along the southern end of the property now runs in a straight line all the way back to the back of the property. And Tim's going to show it right now.
Originally, the fence went from the street to the front edge of the garage and then tied into that. And now it goes the entire length of the property.
The only reason this came up today was because we got an email from a resident from 881 right here, just questioning how this fence was run. In the drawing I handed out Friday, it showed it returning to the garage right here and then coming up the property line like this. It was a question that was just brought up today, they decided to adjust it before their presentation tonight. Again, that's the only change on the drawing here. And then they noted that no trees will be removed up here. There's no changes from the one I submitted to you guys, other than that.
And may I ask, during the presentation, I apologize for being late, it was unavoidable. Um, did the presentation include whether the applicant went to the town of Amherst and submitted a curb cut for Village Point Lane?
Yes, it did, myself and Sean Hopkins met with Pat Lucy last week. He reiterated he would deny it, we did get a letter from him today. I forwarded it this evening, I did, meant to get it out this afternoon, but it didn't go out. But they have, it's on the website, and he reiterated his denial and said that he would not grant the curb cut, so. They did formally apply as you requested. We did get a formal denial, reiterating the initial denial from Pat Lucy.
And Tim did email a copy of that letter to us tonight at 7:35, so.
There's other ways to thank you, sorry.
In your, in your inbox. Any other questions on the motion? Deb, could you please do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rizone?
Yes.
Mr. Trigilio?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer?
Given the striking visual discord that this project represents and the scale and density of it as opposed to gradual transition to a higher density, no.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman Culpa?
No.
Four to three?
Four to three. Okay, can we move on to architectural review, please? Anyone care to make a motion regarding architectural review?
I'm happy to make a motion on that, does anyone want to discuss it before?
I do. I would like to see drawing A201, the top drawing, that bays two and four have brick type A for the lower portions of both of the buildings.
Can you better describe where you're talking, they shared it up here.
Yes, base two and four from the left.
Starting from the north, down to the south.
You're starting on the left or the right?
Starting from the left, that's bay one, and bay two, right where your cursor is, bay four.
Could we go back to Matt's colored rendering?
Oh, yep.
Matt presented a colored rendering, that may help.
Two.
I've seen the color rendering, I've seen the entire packet. And I would, I'm requesting a change. Would the applicant like to comment?
Deb, I'm not sure what the question is, Kate, I missed the question part of it, I apologize.
Bay two and four, I would like you to reconsider the bottom portion of the building so that it matches, and this is where it's important to have actual drawings, not color renderings, brick type A.
Bottom portion.
Does Admiral Red Bull?
I made a comment at the previous meeting that it looked like the foundation was not articulated from the materials used on this. And I feel that using the same brick type B that you are using on the foundation levels.
I understand, gotcha.
Two, so everyone else they understand that, two bays all the way to the right could be presented differently, in my opinion, better to have the entire facade of each portion of this building be the same color as the upper levels, so that it reads as a building and not a very one, not as a one-story building with a walkout basement.
Okay, so each unit would have two floors of siding, is what you're saying?
Well, brick, in this case.
It's all, it's all brick, right, Kate? And you're saying you would like to save these red buildings to be red all the way down, right?
Yes.
And not have the same color on that first level, the same.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I am fine with that, Kate, I think that what we have here is we have that water table up to that line that is, it's easier if I control this pointer. Tim, I hope, Tim, Tim, are you moving in, hopefully you understand what I'm saying here? Far left side, first bay, go to the water table where it hits that window, yeah, right there, stop, please. Okay, so brick below that is one color. Please head to bay number two, which is the one immediately to the right. That band, which is again the same color, you want from the windowsill up to the, the floor line between floor one and two to be red there, correct?
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah, absolutely.
It reads as a water table, because you had it as a water table on the far right, it reads as a water table all the way through.
No, I'm, I'm 100% fine with that, it's always sort of a funky condition how we dealt with this with the grade change. That would then read more like bays one and three versus how they read a little bit differently in two and four. So yeah, 100% okay with it, very easy change, think it's a good change.
Right, so okay, you're saying with the way it is now, it makes it basically look like that first floor is really just like a, the water.
Water table.
Yeah.
It makes, it makes it a raised foundation instead of a first floor.
Right, it bleeds, that, that color bleeds the water table into the first floor color, which also then mimics the foundation, so it looks like a high foundation, which I think you're saying is particularly exacerbated at number five, where it sort of grows a little bit more. So I understand that completely, and I think that's a good change. So yes, change to red.
Also, I would like you to make the, we'll call them grid lines on the warmer windows more in line with the colonial double hungs on those same facades. Right now, they're very, it's a very tight grid, and I feel it's out of place with the larger grid patterns that are used on the other windows.
What would you propose?
Are they, are they fixed windows, or they, they don't read as double hungs, what are they?
They're just a picture window. They're, they're, they're fake windows that sit up there for aesthetic effect. So they're going to be either blacked out or a truss area, so it could be whatever it has to be there with the grill on it. Fixed, so we could, if we use the same proportions, you probably would get, and I'm just looking at my CAD drawing right now, you probably would get one grill down the middle and then probably two horizontal would probably be most similar, or maybe just one, one horizontal and one vertical.
You're going to get one and one on everything except for bay four. So you're going to get four divided lights, four fake divided lights, you are not allowed to blackout behind those, that is against our code.
Okay.
Also, then, looking at those same rhythms of grid patterns, I was confused by the, I believe they're sliders that are on story two, bays one, two, four, five, and six. Why the grid patterns became different? It could just be clear if you wanted to differentiate. I just feel like there's a lot of grids going on here. On the first floor, you have a very tight grid that tries to mimic.
Oh, no, yeah, I should, yeah, I think it, you know, I think it might have been just from changing it so many darn times, honestly. So I agree with you as well, so you would like it to obviously be consistent throughout the project. So the door that you see on the first floor.
Those, those, those sliders possibly should just be clear glass. You're trying to do a lot of grid work on those. If you were to do, because right now you've got one, two, three times six, I mean, you've got 18 grids on the door below it on the first floor. That's not, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a door like that that has these proportions. Maybe it's the way it's drawn, but there's something wrong with those doors. They should have a much wider style at the bottom. But they're full of glass? Could you tell us more about the materials of those?
Yeah, those are aluminum, aluminum entry doors and aluminum clad windows with wood interior. So the aluminum is the entire rectangle and the styles of the windows and the doors will sit a frame around it. And then everything that you see, the grill patterns in the doors are grills that are made of wood.
Are they between the panes of glass?
What would you like?
Well, I, I'm just looking at, you have, you have clientele here that may be more, I don't know, maybe.
Typically, we do, yeah, typically. Right, typically, we do put them between the glass as it becomes a maintenance issue, was, as you say, with, I mean, I have them in my house where they're on the interior side, and they're true divided lights, and they're a pane. And it's just hard to clean, and I have, you know, another area in my house that has removable ones and it's all off, so we're not to put. So in between the glass is the best for the project and for maintenance long term. So that's what we probably would do, that's what I would suggest to do.
Do you want to go with the 18 divided light door?
I'm, I am fine with how that looks.
For security reasons, I'm just questioning.
Um, we did this in other areas that are not Williamsville, and it's been okay thus far. Now.
Right, if you're comfortable, then I'm comfortable. So I would just like you to have a final decision on all of the doors, are you looking at a eight divided light window for all your sliders and, and let me say, 18 divided light on your first floor bars?
Are you asking me for my, for, the way it's drawn is how we presented it. So if you want, if you're suggesting anything else.
You did say that it was leftover, so we're just asking what you want.
Oh, right, no, I'm fine, I'm fine with the way it is right now. The way that we are presenting it is the aesthetic that we are comfortable with. So if it's, if it's clarifying the aesthetic based on saying that this is indeed an eight divided light slider up here, or more than, you know, we'll say, that's in the drawing, so we can clearly see it. We show it as the, I believe we said 18 at the first floor, which matches that grill pattern at the windows adjacent to it. I think that looks pleasing. If there's any specific comment against it or a reason not to do that, we'd be happy to entertain it.
Ron, do you want to weigh in on that? Ron, you.
Well, I, I am kind of now thinking about the fact that it is a glass door, is it in that it is the front entry to a house, that is very uncommon. That, that doesn't feel right to me. As far as the lights, they should be more consistent in size.
Okay.
And read, now, perhaps what we're looking at is that the, the average window, what is the width of that window, are they, have a?
Let me, let me pull, hold on, let me pull it off a CAD right now, so it is, they are drawn at typical three by five, six, three feet wide by.
All right, well, that's, that's a six on six, okay. May, perhaps the fenestration on the patio doors needs to be studied more to kind of start to blend in. Do they, does it have to be all glass like that? Because it just doesn't, they don't seem to flow together to me.
Ron, I, you know, the thing that, you know, this is what I love about this project is the continued discussion here and things that we wouldn't have thought about in our office, or we sort of accepted, and someone else gives their opinion, so it's great. We're thankful for this. I do think now that you guys mentioned and said, yes, this is the front floor or front facing portion of basically these houses that we're creating, that doesn't seem right to me as well. If we're, we've done these a lot of times in areas where it faces the rear or it's set back further, it doesn't really matter as much, but this is, you know, the, the goal here is walkable Williamsville. And right, now you're going to be looking right in, you're going to be on display there. So the, my first, my gut feeling here is we just go with at max a nine light door. we just go with at max a nine light door, or maybe even a six light at the front, which then aligns with that meeting rail of the double hung window. So it would be for, for people who are not as architecturally versed as, and Ron is and Kate is in architecture. Um, so if you're looking at one of those patio doors entering the first floor of one of these units, the horizontal lines on those doors, which is all glass, there's one, two, three, four, five. If I'm working my way down from the top, one line down, two lines down, two lines down would be the glass, and the rest of it could be some sort of either panel or something else that would mimic the aesthetics. That way it would, you know, help to provide more security and, you know, get away from that potential patio doorwork, which it sounds like is what you're saying here.
So this is what the door would look like?
I'm sorry?
This is what the door would look like.
Oh.
Are we seeing something?
That's a nice door.
They were, yeah. That is a door.
It's holding up a full. Is this what you wanted, Kate? And then I just said it randomly and you had it there? Cause that's very nice that you had it right there. We did, that is, what, what are you, selling doors?
Selling doors. I'm gonna be buying doors.
Okay. Yeah. I, although I like the, I think, I personally think that that, given the feedback that you're giving us right now, that would make sense.
When you walk in these front doors, you walk right into the living room, or what do you walk into?
Yeah, you walk into a living space.
So I would think it would, door height showed to be a little more appropriate instead of a full length glass door looking into a living room. And, and by the way, I, I just took a look at the code, cause my concern when you started talking about that was we do have transparency, minimum transparency requirements, but in the NMU that really only is an issue for commercial buildings. Since this is a residential building, the door does not, so, so you can give up that transparency and not run into a transparency issue because this is a residential building.
And then the patio doors above, uh, Matt, is there any reason why they wouldn't be a, uh, result, uh, match the windows? I mean, I, I see it's a larger grid, but does it, why wouldn't it just be the same grid pattern?
It could be the same grid, it could be the same grid pattern. Um, there, I, I think that because we have sliders in that area, and we need sliders for accessibility reasons to get onto the porch and have the required depth, that we would most likely default to full glass, just because that's what you typically get in that type of application. But I think that if we match the grill pattern of the, well, if we have an eighteen light door at the first floor, that could just translate to the second. And it would match the exact same proportions of those windows to the right.
Right. Okay.
So you're talking, the same door that was on the first floor is now on the second floor?
Right. It would just, I, I believe those are roughly the same width of, I, we have a three foot or three foot two wide entry door, whatever it requires to get the, you know, whatever the product is that has a fully accessible, um, swing, and that it would be two of those next to each other, and each of those panels would be the same as the first floor then, the same grill pattern.
I, I'm very confused. So they're gonna be glass, so you, so you're not gonna do the same as on the first floor? Because now that is a wood door, or it's a aluminum door, or steel door, wood door, whatever you're using, with six lights towards the top of the door. So how are you mimicking that to, to, um, the second floor, or are you using old door?
It would, old door, new door, um, the second floor, because they are sliders. Typically in sliders, you don't have panels in the sliders that are, you know, things that we are most likely to be able to put in this project. So what I'm proposing is to match, to match the pattern and to match the overall aesthetic and the spacing of the grills, I would wanna take the glass that is currently shown at the first floor and basically use that same grill pattern on both of those second floor doors. So it would be an eighteen light door each side.
Okay, that's clear.
Tim, can you pull that, the elevations back up so we can see what they're talking about? So Matt, I don't, I don't know if you wanna repeat anything you just said with the, with the elevation up, but I just wanna make sure everything's clear here.
Can, um, Tim, are you still in charge of this thing? Like Vanoway? Can you zoom, can you zoom in a little bit on one of the bays? Do you have that power? So we can look at the wind. There you go. Plus, keep going. More, please. Okay, a little bit more, and then just center. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I was looking at my, my drawing over here. I didn't realize you guys didn't have it open, so I apologize for that. So what Kate was getting at, a typical entry door at the first floor, we are showing that now, the one that is adjacent to grade, we are showing that is all glass. So in, in our discussions right now, we're proposing to just have the six squares, they're called lights, at the top of that door remain, and the rest would be a panel door. That would give more privacy, and that light would match up with the meeting rail of those, uh, double hung windows to the right. So that line would sort of continue through through. At the second floor, Kate was questioning the patio doors as they're currently drawn, why there's only eight lights on those doors. We are fine with changing those, and in discussion, we think it makes more sense to take the glass as it's currently drawn at the first floor with the eighteen lights, and basically put those up there. So you just have more lights that are denser and mimic what's going on to the adjacent windows. Hopefully that's clear. And I can reiterate if not.
And, and Ron and Kate, was that what you understood him to be saying?
Yes. So that, can I ask a question? The second floor windows on those balconies are sliders?
Yes.
And each one of those individual doors is going to have how many lights?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I would just like to know why the siding, I don't know, is it hardwood? I can't tell from here. What, at the per- elements above those sliders, why on bays two and four, we can vote if the siding color of the, those elevations?
On two, okay, um, on two, well, so two and four.
Two, four, and, or, and six.
Right, right. That's, so that, those areas, the red is brick there. So rather than.
I knew that earlier. Okay.
Rather than mimic the brick, we just kept it consistent.
Other questions? There are no more questions. Anyone care to make a motion?
Don't make a motion. All right, uh, my motion is on 2019 PB 6B Architectural Review for 135 Evans Street to approve the architectural plan as presented on 9/8/2020 with the following changes to the north building. That bays two and four will have the red brick continue from the water table to the second story. That front entry doors to each bay will be a solid door with a six light panel, and that second floor sliders will be glass doors with eighteen light. Hopefully that covers it.
Yeah, about the dormers?
What would you like changed about the dormers?
The dormer grid patterns are being modified as well.
Oh, okay. And onto that Deb, that the dormer window grids will be changed to be?
Kind of the same pattern as the window below them?
Right.
Four lights, all bays except for three.
One, two, three, five, and six. Dormer window on bay four would be, what would that be?
It would probably be a six light.
Which, which bays will have four lights?
One, ooh, my goodness. One, two, three, five, and six. And bay four will have a six light dormer window.
Um, and again, we're, this is in reference to drawings. I don't believe there were any modifications submitted today in the architectural, though, correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, we're talking about. Okay, so basically what we're talking about is subject to those changes that Amy recited, the architectural rendering a- as depicted on drawing A 201, A 202, A 203, and that's it, right? Did I get them all?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With a revision date, most recent revision date of eight. Sorry, what is it? Eight fourteen twenty? Or fifteen? Eight eighteen. Sorry. It's too dark in here.
Eighteen.
Eight, eighteen, twenty, twenty. That's the entire motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
That was Ron?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions on the motion?
My question is, are we, it says asphalt type A. Is there an asphalt type B?
No, there is not. It's just a way of noting it.
Would the applicant be willing to introduce an asphalt type B in a, the same color, different, um, gradation to give more depth to that facade?
Yeah, but I, I, we're fine with it. I just wanna, I don't know how you wanna write that down because I, I wanna, we wanna take a look and make sure it looks good still, right? Cause if we go too far away, it might, might look a little funky. Too many things getting changed. So however you will.
Well, basically you would use a moire and a little lighter gray as the roof.
Sure. That's okay. Yes.
So you could either, at the board's pleasure, either do it in groups of two. So bay one and two would have the same roof. Three and four would have the same roof. And then five and six might have the same roof as one and two, or you could do every year. My suggestion probably would be two roofs at a time. So it looks less busy, but subtly a little bit.
And Kate, would you, are you suggesting that that would be consistent between the three buildings, or would you like to see them sort of mix and match? So each building doesn't necessarily follow the same pattern?
No, I don't think that's necessary. I, I think that three buildings have the same, um, mixture or rhythm of these color changes.
I like that.
Could you please repeat those grid numbers, et cetera?
So, well, at the board's pleasure, it would be bays one and two would be the same. Bayes three and four would be a slightly different shade of, I'm assuming it's gray. And bays five and six would be the same shade as one and two.
I apologize, Amy, if you already indicated, but are you, you, you willing to accept that as an additional change to your motion?
Yes.
And this is Sean, that's for, that's for all three buildings, right? I just wanna make sure it's clear.
It's for all three buildings.
Right, thank you.
And Amy, if you could modify the motion once again to say that the applicant should submit uh, color samples of both roofs for the board's review.
Okay. Deb, please add that to the motion that in addition to what Kate had modified or stated about the, uh, to be used for shingles, that the applicant will submit color samples for both types, for both colors of shingles to the board to be approved before any, uh, construction is start.
Okay, submit it to the building department?
Yes.
All right, Ron, you okay with that for the second?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Those are good suggestions.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the motion? If not, uh, Deb, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Rizone?
Yes.
Mr. Trigilia?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer?
Given the much improved design from the original, to paraphrase what Sean said, and I do like the building, not where it's cited, but yes.
Um, Amy Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman Culpa?
Yes.
Passes six to one. Okay. Anyone have anything else tonight? I just wanna, um, quickly, cause Wes, you asked the question earlier about the timing issue. I just wanna remind the applicant that these approvals are good for 12 months. You can apply for an extension if necessary, but just be aware of that. If, if you are not able to commence construction or meet the conditions within that time period, you would have to come back for an extension.
Okay, thank you, Tim. If I didn't read the code, is it pull a building permit, or is it commence construction?
It's, oh, that's a good question, Tim. Uh, it is.
I was under the impression it was building permit, but I, I could be very wrong.
Building permit, yeah, I'm sorry. So that, important correction. It's not to start construction, but to pull the building permit. So if you pull a building permit and then don't start for three years, it's still valid? Well, I gotta look, cause there might be a provision in the building perm, the building permits might have an expiration date too. I don't.
Cause it's not in their best interest to do that, cause they'd be paying an astronomical fee to sit on there for three years to renew it.
True, yes. Okay.
I thought.
Yeah, so.
If no one else says anything tonight, anyone care to make a motion to adjourn? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for. Thank you. I'd like to thank the board members and everybody for all their hard work.
Yeah, thank you, members of the board. We appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Night.
Night.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.